Good to see you. I've got a couple of minutes, I can say hi.
Yeah, well, for me, seven and three quarters. I tell people, right, you're right. I want to live to one hundred. Because what I do, listen, what I do is have somebody take my picture the next day, and I send it to the morning show. And they take my picture, and they put it on these, these sort of channels. They're still doing that. So, it's not like that. Doesn't cost us anything. Well, enjoy your meeting with some, an hour and a half, I hope.
Well, you guys got a closed session today.
Yeah, but that's about four minutes. Which is, closed session about four minutes. It's just a big share there. Parking spaces are made by the white ones. I hope that's it on that, that's.
All right, it is 7:01 PM, Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call the regular city council meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dan Zander, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Most gracious God, we thank you for this day. We pray for our city council members tonight in the congregation here. And we just wanted to pray for our residents down in different states for their flood, and just bring them safe home, to just bring their houses back to where they want to. We pray for them, and we pray for everything that we can do. So let the, let the city council goes through tonight, and let's go for it in Jesus' name and pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and the first thing we are going to start off with today is a proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month. We have our chair from ACDC, Wanda Moody. Would you like to come up and read it? Thank you.
Absolutely, praise God, everyone. I'm here representing the ACD Commission, and I will be reading the proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. The City of East Point Proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month, October twenty twenty-four. Whereas with over sixty million Hispanic Americans residing in the United States, Hispanic Americans make up the largest minority group in the nation, and have significantly contributed to our government, culture, and economy over the generations. And whereas the Hispanic community in America has made many important advances in areas of law, religion, agriculture, art, music, education, technology, architecture, tech, cuisine, theater, and exploitation. Whereas Hispanic Americans have provided Michigan and the United States with unique social and cultural influences, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our state and nation. And whereas Michigan is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent, who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. And whereas the city of East Point, Michigan, is home to a vibrant and diverse population, including many Hispanic Americans who contribute to our community's social, cultural, and economic fabric. And whereas during this month, Michigan's Hispanic American community will celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month through a series of special events featuring Hispanic history, food, dance, and art, celebrating the rich tradition and many contributions this community has made to the state of Michigan. And whereas the city of East Point should celebrate and recognize the significant contributions and countless achievements of Hispanic Americans, and continue our efforts to acknowledge the challenges they have faced and overcome. Now therefore, the city council for the city of East Point does hereby proclaim October twenty-fourth as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of East Point, proclaim September fifteenth through the fifteenth day of October twenty twenty-four. And this proclamation is signed by the mayor of the city of East Point, Mayor Michael Kleinfeld, and all of the appointed council members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have a Native American Heritage Month proclamation, and I believe Councilman Curly.
Oh, thank you. City of East Point Proclamation, Native American Heritage Month, November two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the indigenous peoples of North America, the First Americans, have woven rich and diverse threads into the tapestry of our nation's heritage. Throughout their long history on this great land, they have faced moments of profound triumph and tragedy alike, including the missing and murdered indigenous women and peoples academic, and the dehorrent history of the trauma that existed as a result of the Indian boarding school system. And whereas the state of Michigan is the home of more than two hundred and forty thousand Native Americans or Alaskan Native residents, and twelve federally recognized Indian tribes, and much of the land we now call Michigan was ceded between seventeen ninety-five and eighteen forty-two by the tribes throughout treaties with the United States. And whereas in the month of November, we celebrate the ancestry and time-honored traditions of American Indians and Alaskan natives in North America. They have guided our land stewardship policies, and immensely to the culture heritage, and demonstrated courage in the face of adversity. And whereas the Native Americans have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, scholars, teachers, scientists, doctors, writers, artists, business leaders, and elected officials, heroes in uniform, and so much more, they have made immeasurable contributions to our country's progress. Our debt is to our First Americans is immense, as is our responsibility to ensure their fair, equal treatment and honor, and the commitment we made to their forefathers. And whereas during the Native American Heritage Month, we recognize and celebrate their many accomplishments, contributions, and sacrifices, that we pay tribute to their particip- participation in all aspects of American society, and we celebrate the rich, diverse culture traditions and histories of Native Americans, while acknowledging the significant contributions they make to the government, education, economics, art, science, literature, and more in East Point, the state of Michigan, and the United States. And whereas the city of East Point is the home to those Native Americans heritage, we should celebrate and recognize the significant contributions and countless achievements of Native Americans. Learn about the history of tribal governments and unique challenges Native Americans have faced historically, and continue to face today, and continue our efforts to acknowledge the challenges they have faced and overcome. Now therefore, the city of, council of the city of East Point does hereby proclaim November two thousand twenty-four as Native American Heritage Month in the city of East Point, proclaim this fifteenth day of October two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you very much. And with those resolutions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Brishadlick.
Here.
Great, approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support that.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Brishadlick.
Yes.
All right, and the first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening, council. Mary Hall Rafford. I need to say some things tonight that really don't pertain to council, but because of some events that preclude my commenting on certain things during school board meeting because trustee comments were eliminated, there are some things I need to make sure the public is aware of. We have an election coming up soon, there are three incumbents on the ballot that people need to understand why they should not be reelected. We have currently four pending lawsuits against the superintendent and the school board. The reason for that is because people are not doing their due diligence in making sure that the district is protected, not the superintendent. If I sounded a little emotional, it's because I am. This should not be. I've said before that if we aren't careful, we're not going to have a school district, and I'm almost beginning to think that's the plot. Because there is no way, in eighteen months, eighteen months, four lawsuits regarding racial discrimination, that makes no sense to me. But we have a president who does whatever the heck he wants, and a ditto squad that follows along. And I'm not going to be trying to be nice about it, this is what's going on, and I need people to pay attention, because our kids in this city deserve better. They deserve people who actually care about them and want to see the district survive. Last night, I voted no on some new hires, and I was asked to explain it. I voted no on the new instructional hires, because at the moment, hiring people at the district is like a revolving door. And I'm tired of the revolving door, and the inexperienced, unqualified staff that's being hired. We need to do better for our kids, and I need the voters to understand, when you vote, please know who it is you're voting for, and just don't vote. For name recognition, our kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be here?
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, council. May I pass out something? That be okay?
You can hand it.
All right, thank you. My name is Sylvia Ordunio, and I was here a few months ago talking with you all about water affordability, and I wanted to let you know that we've got some information to share with you today. We did a survey with several residents in the city from mid-August to early September, and we are sharing the results of that with you there. I also wanted to, again, remind you that one of the reasons we're here is because we know that water affordability is a problem among East Point residents, as the city with the highest poverty rate in Macomb County, and a lot of residents that have spoken with us in the past about their concerns with water affordability. We wanted to, again, ask for your consideration of supporting statewide affordability. And so in the packet there, you'll see a summary of the results. Those same results were shared with residents who participated in the survey, we made sure to get a copy to them at their homes. You'll also see in there a summary of the water affordability legislation that is being presented, as we understand, this fall. But one of the things that, again, is important to know is, there isn't, as yet, confirmed support for it among the elected representatives in Macomb County. I know that the drain commissioner was here last week, and she was talking, excuse me, last time, and she was talking about rain barrels and other concerns with drainage costs. Drainage costs are very much part of the water bill concern with residents, and so we wanted to, again, ask your support for this. In the packet that you all are receiving who are elected members, is also a copy of a petition that now has over a hundred signatures from your colleagues in cities, townships, counties, commissions as well, as well as mayors, some county elected executives. And so we're asking for you to also sign on support of that, please. You'll see in there also a couple of op-eds that have been written by Councilmember Yanitz in Sterling Heights, as well as Newman and Warren, also in support of water affordability, as representatives that are in cities with the third and fourth largest populations in the state, we believe it, again, is really important for Macomb County. And so I'm going to turn it over here to my colleagues so they can share with a little bit more of the survey results and their experiences, but again, we think it was really important to be able to share with you some of the results of residents themselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
How you all doing today? My name is Roslyn Walker, and this is Alton McIntyre. We were the ones that was out going door to door for the five weeks that we went out, and a lot of residents cannot really afford to pay their water bill. A lot of them says high, a lot of them say they have to buy bottled water, because they said that there is lead in the water, and a lot of them, you know, just need to, you know, and they wasn't aware of the global thing where you can get your, help with your water bill, so we were out letting them know, and we was finding out that it was a lot of them that did have problems paying their water bills. They make ways to pay their water bills, but if they could, if we can have this state bills passed, then I think it would help everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Like Roslyn stated, I'm Alton McIntyre, and I was going door to door talking to your residents and letting them know about the water affordability across Michigan that we're fighting for, is for clean and affordable water for all residents in Michigan, from upper Michigan to lower Michigan. That even includes you guys as well, and having affordable water for your residents makes it affordable for the council, makes it affordable for the business owners and all that lives in East Point. East Point's not that far away from Detroit. Do you know that, on average, going door to door there, we had dropped their water bills down to where most residents are paying between sixty and seventy dollars a month? Out here, that was the largest I ever experienced, a person to tell me today I actually paid two hundred dollars a month for water? That's not affordable. It couldn't be. And asking about the households, you're going according to the Water Affordability Act, and the households, that means everyone in the household must have, I mean, everyone in the district must have a certain amount of people in their household. It takes actually nine cases of water for each individual that's sitting there to bathe and wash with, cook with, and when it's all said and done, you're paying for water twice, if you're buying bottled water and you're paying to have water in your home. So it would be a good suggestion to have a sign on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Wickerly, and I also work with People's Water Board. I too went over the survey of what was collected from all these discussions with people in the neighborhood, and these are some of the results. One is that eighty-six percent of the residents believe their water bill is high. Eighty-seven percent of the residents believe other East Point residents have trouble paying the water bill. Eighty percent of the residents had not applied for the water bill assistance through the Great Lakes Water Authority's Water Residential Assistance Program called RAP. Approximately sixty-six percent of these respondents were not even aware of RAP. To tell you the truth, that disturbed me the most, that there was help out there, and there was all these people struggling to pay their water bills, and they had no idea that a program even existed in order to help them pay the water bills. So I'm not very good with going on the computer, but I looked, I went on the website, and to tell you the truth, I couldn't find a thing in the, in the East Point's website about RAP, you know, to help people with information. So, I mean, I may be wrong, it may be someplace, but I really think people need to be told. But it, there is going to be a major difference between the RAP program, which is a temporary assistance for a very limited time, which is available now through the Great Lakes Water Authority, and a statewide program, which is what these bills are about. Because the statewide program will last. I mean, if you continue to have a very low-wage job, or you continue to be disabled, or you're in some other serious financial trouble, you'll be able to continue to have a reduced bill that will be reduced to like two or three percent of your income if you are two hundred percent or below the poverty level. So it will help a huge section of people, and it won't be cut off. You know, you won't have to worry about, you know, your mom being without water, just because she's old and doesn't have a very good income.
You have about thirty seconds?
Okay, let's see, what else didn't I read? Well, the last two were about contacting East Point City Council members, eighty-seven percent of the residents that supported statewide water affordability said that they would help to contact the council members and the representatives. And I just wanted to say that in Oakland County, the commission supported it, and said that affordable water is a moral imperative, and fully fundable water system pays for important infrastructure and keeps the water safe.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to be here?
Thank you. My name's Pastor Albert Rush, pastor of East Point Emmanuel, United Methodist Church, and a citizen of East Point. I'm calling in regards to communication protocols. About a month ago, September thirteenth, I sent a letter to both the mayor and all members of city council requesting the possibility of a proclamation that you put together for our church. We are celebrating a hundred and seventy-five years in the halfway, East Detroit, East Point community on November third at three PM. We have been in this community for a number of years, we serve in a number of areas. I sent the email out to see what the process could be for a proclamation, I got no answer. I resent the email out this morning to everybody again, I got no answer. Our event is coming up on the thirteenth, in three weeks, we want to have some representation and support from the East Point city, the government there. We've got Representative Jesus James, people are coming, Lucido Kleinfeld, we've got something from Gary Peters, we've got something from Debbie Stabinoff, but unless, unless I'm sending it to the wrong email address or something, I've got no communication from you whatsoever. Can you please help me understand, what is the protocol when we want to do something, or do I have to come to a meeting like this to discuss it, to get these things done? We just want you all to celebrate something wonderful that's happening, that this church has been doing in this community, even when it was only speaking in German, coming forth, and now we're really excited for our celebration, and we want you to, if possible, if you feel like you, if you think we're doing a good job, and you may want to honor us, maybe you don't, I don't know, but if you do, please let me know what I need to do to have some type of proclamation, so that we can say that you guys can be along with the rest of Macomb County, the nation's government, and our state government. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Check the emails, and just contact me.
Anyone else?
Good evening, mayor and council. As mentioned earlier, I am Wanda Moody, the East Point Arts Culture and Diversity Commission current chair, and the purpose of this commission is to port, to support diversity in our community as well as the arts in many cultures. This year, we observed Black History Month, we took part in the Memorial Day Parade, and we had a fantastic Juneteenth celebration, and the annual art exhibition at the Patriot Building will take place in three days. We are very excited for the first time during this celebration, we are having youth art, so it's going to be a separate day altogether for the youth artists here in East Point, and we count it joy to celebrate our children. Also, the commissioners of the commission, we have visited art exhibits throughout the state, we have utilized social media like never before, we have walked the streets, handing out flyers, therefore, we know it's going to be a wonderful celebration. We have artists that are well-renowned artists internationally, that have been on CNN, they are going to be part of this art exhibit, so we are excited about that, and it pays off with due diligence. So we want to, with all of that being said, to the, to the mayor, and the commission, there are all of the city council members, all of the residents of East Point, we are personally inviting you to please join us on Friday night, the time is from five PM to eight PM, it's an open reception, you will enjoy it, we will have a violinist there this time, this year we have a violinist, music, just going to be amazing, and then on Saturday, we will have our youth art exhibit, and we would really like you all to come out once again, I know last year, mayor, you was there, Councilwoman Margaret, you was there, and this year's going to be even nicer, and we just want everyone to know that we are doing great things through that. that we are doing great things through that commission here in the city of East Point. So plan to stop by, look at forty-eight pieces of art. We have forty-eight pieces of art that will be displayed. And we would look forward to having you come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing now the first hearing of the public is closed, and we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Item A, closed session minutes, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the minutes of the closed session of September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, item B, regular meeting minutes from October first, two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October first, two thousand twenty-four.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, unfinished business. Item A, discussion and motion on years two and three of the assessing services contract. Did anyone want to open up or make a motion on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I think I just had one, one more question about this. How many people do we have in City Hall right now for the current assessing contract?
We currently have three. So we typically have two clerks at our counter and then our assessor as well. There have been times like during the summer months where there's an additional member that comes in for some special projects and that did some coding for. So this summer, we did have three clerks and then the assessor.
Okay. And they're all from Assessment Administration Services, you're saying, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Would anyone like to make a, I think we still need a motion on this one?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion. I will motion that we are amending previous amounts that we awarded. We previously awarded the two percent increases per year, but their bid was for three percent. So instead, the numbers would be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for year one, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred for year two, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three for year three, for a total of eight hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars for Assessment Administration Services, for assessing services.
I'll second.
All right, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. And we'll move on to reports from administration. We'll start with our city manager, Ms. Mariah Walton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I'd like to start Deck the Halls Christmas auction for, with the Chamber of Commerce is scheduled for November seventh at five-thirty at the Vintage House. If you're interested in participating, the chamber still has reservations and tickets available. You can contact the chamber directly. Rain barrels, exciting news. Last week, we posted the application for anyone that is interested in a rain barrel. It is on our website on the community tab. I believe we already have about a hundred and seventy applications. So if you're interested, please get on it soon, get those applications in so that we can get those rain barrels out. We are anticipating those to be received from the county October twenty-fifth or directly after. And so we'll continue communication on receiving those rain barrels with the applicants following receiving those via email. As you may have noticed when you've come in, I'd like to give a shout out to all of the staff in City Hall. They've taken a lot of time and have started up a competition for decorating for Halloween. So all of our departments currently are in competition with each other. We have three special judges, one of them sitting here, Mr. Harvey Curley, that'll be judging on Halloween, and also a costume contest that he'll be judging. Again, city money was not used. All the departments and staff are really doing this together, increasing morale and working together. So it's incredible to see, and I just want to give a shout out to our, our staff here in City Hall. Rare is also having a trick or treat event on October twenty-fifth at six P M. to eight P M. Members of council will be there if you're interested in following that trail, as well as other members within the community. So if you have any family kids that you'd like to bring out, again, it's at the Rare Building. It's indoors, so the weather is fine. Kids can stay warm and wear their costumes. Again, that's at Rare's building, October twenty-fifth from six to eight P M. Registering to vote, you can register here at the clerk's office or online. Early voting is starting October twenty-sixth, so next Saturday at the library. If you're interested in voting, you can vote in person with a ballot into a tabulator starting next Saturday through November third. And then if you still need to register to vote, stop in, see our clerk's office, and they can certainly help you out. I'd like to second Ms. Moody's comments on ACDC and the incredible event. I know the commission, the staff liaison, as well as the council liaison, has spent a lot of time and effort in making this a very successful event. So if you're available, please stop by and see all of their efforts come, come to fruition for this event. I know it's been very special for our staff and the, and the commission moving forward. And with that, Mayor and Council, if you have any questions, I can certainly answer those.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the finance director's report, Mr. Blom.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Earlier today, before this meeting, I did a quick check. Today was the county's second round of auctions, and every one of our five vacant parcels had at least two bids on them. I don't know what the closing is, but they ranged from a hundred and one to six hundred and eighty-three dollars last I looked. That means none of them are coming back to us. So they will all be back on the tax rolls. And that's all I have.
All right, any, any questions? City Attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I only had one agenda or thing to talk about this evening, and it's just an announcement that at the last council meeting, the council did schedule recreational marijuana workshop for Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, here in the council chambers at five-thirty. I know that there is a lot of interest in this topic because I've been fielding a lot of questions here at our office. And in fact, I had an attorney call me today. So I just wanted to put that out there for anybody watching at home. That's when the workshop's going to be. That's all.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to new business. Item A, approval of resolution number twenty-four dash one nine nine one, approving the transportation asset management plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'll jump in. There's a resolution at the end of that item, just before item B. I guess if you got the printed one out, it's, you know, a hundred and something pages after the beginning of it. There's a resolution there. So I'll motion that we approve that resolution, number twenty-four dash nineteen ninety-one, a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four Transportation Asset Management Plan and submitting to the Transportation Asset Management Council for approval.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Any questions on this one?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to ask the city manager, and I'm delighted to see, says Transportation Asset Managers Council, the city will be able to transfer up to fifty percent of that fifty-one major road funding to local streets. So how much is fifty percent?
I guess that's a question for you.
Pop quiz here. We're currently transferring about one point three. So it'd be an additional one point three-ish million per year.
One point three for local streets. I am, I'm giggling right now, especially at that test, because, you know, I've been pushing local streets, and I know all the other members of council and mayor have as well. So we're happy to see that. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item B, approval of the extension of contract, of the contract for twenty twenty-four sanitary sewer open cut repairs districts numbers two and three. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Ask a quick question about that. Mr. Mayor, the, can we give a brief overview of the pricing?
Would you be able to?
Yeah, go ahead and do that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we did get a proposal from Fontana Construction who performed the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer open cut repair program. We've left that contract open in case of any emergency open cut repairs that might come up. We've now completed the cleaning and televising of the sanitary sewer system throughout the whole city now and have a better idea of what repairs need to be made. We did put in the budget for this year, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sanitary sewer repairs, both sanitary sewer lining and for open cut repairs. We did reach out to Fontana Construction to see if they'd be willing to hold their pricing from the twenty twenty-two program. And they have held their unit pricing for all the items, except for the lump sum items that were part of that bid, which include a traffic maintenance and control, audio visual, up the sites prior to construction, site cleanup, permit fees and that, which amounted to about a seventeen thousand dollar increase in those items compared to the twenty twenty-two program. But overall, by holding those prices and comparing it with recent bids that we've received for similar work in the last few months in other nearby communities, based on a per-footage price, it still comes in less than what we would get if we bid it out.
And just one follow-up question, I guess. Thank you for the overview. I guess so. What is then the percentage increase factoring that in? The additional extra costs?
Percentage, offhand, I don't, on the percentage-wise, I'm not sure.
I think what's seventeen thousand over three hundred and thirty-five thousand?
It's a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar cut, yeah.
Or over three eighteen, I guess. I think so. Five percent increase. I guess I just want to state, if we approve this, it is like five percent increase over what we were paying. I know the unit prices, like Mr. Current saying, are the same.
That's correct.
It'll be five percent more than if it was the exact same contract.
I don't think that's too bad from.
No, I do appreciate the comparison to the other projects, but I guess I just, you know, makes more sense to hear the overall increase.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion on that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll motion we extend the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer open cut repair program, district number one contract with Fontana Construction Incorporated, to include the twenty twenty-four program consisting of thirteen critical open cut repair locations in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and further authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Is there support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty-two to add chapter six, article five, special events.
Mayor, I have a question. We received an email, and, well, Mr. Albright, but can we explain what the changes were, just because we didn't do it right here openly? So that way it's transparency.
Yes, Mayor Protem, DeMonico contacted me this morning, and we had a discussion about some additional changes that he would like to see in the proposed ordinance this evening. He does have a copy of the email that was circulated earlier today, and he would like to include that with the, with the motion this evening. But he has a copy that he can just go over and read to the various sections that he would like to see those amendments made.
Sure. Yeah, Councilman Baker, the changes were meant to be consistent with our conversation at the last meeting. They're not intended, I mean, obviously, if you disagree after we read them, let me know. So they're intended to be, for everyone listening, intended to be consistent with our conversation from that last meeting. It was just two, like further clarifications from what we talked about. The first, and they're short, I can read them real quick here for everybody. The first change is at the end of the first paragraph in section six dash one twelve, the exceptions. This is about rare. It says, in addition, any event held by the members of the Recreation Authority of Roseville and East Point is subject to the application process but exempt from the fees and approval process set forth in this article. That was just last time we talked about the school districts. We were saying they need to, or like they don't have to pay the fees either. They do application and approval. But we talked about rare, since they're another government, or they're a government authority, we were saying they should apply. So it's consistent with what everyone else does. They don't have to pay the fee either, but we don't need to approve it at city council. And then the second change was, let's see, that's page seven, number twelve underneath, actually, it's the exceptions area. Also, just at the end of exceptions, a number twelve, unless specifically defined herein, an activity held solely on public property, which does not require for its successful execution the provision and coordination of city services to a degree over and above that which the city routinely provides. And this was just a clause about, we had a question, and I think we, we've had special event applications in the past, I recall them off the top of our head, where someone put it in where it didn't seem like it was necessary. If you just like rent a gazebo at the park and you do invite the public, but you only have like twenty-five people or something, and you're not, you know, doing it inflatable or something like that, you know, you don't need that special event application. So that's what that was meant for, to make that even less vague, just so we don't have anyone paying that hundred bucks if they don't need to.
And I appreciate it. And the reason why I brought it up was just so that, because, I mean, my understanding, I believe, if we went with the second reading because we made a change, we would have to include it. So that way, everybody would know at least what it is that we saw, you know, versus what, along with everything else that we talked about. So just for clarity, but I have no hangups with that. I don't know how the rest of council feels.
No, I'm fine with that.
All right, I would motion then we approve and adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty-two to add article five, special events to chapter six, amusements and entertainments of the city's code of ordinances with the two changes we just outlined.
I'll second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item T, introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty-three, East Point Workforce Housing Pilot for Kelly Road Project. Would anyone like to open up or make a motion?
Unless you've got questions, I don't feel guilty to speak to you. I think most of us can. We need housing networks here, but he just said if he couldn't hear. It's fine if anyone has questions. Otherwise, we can move on.
Mayor, I'll make the motion then a comment. I would move to give the first reading to ordinance number twenty-four dash one two four three, and East Point Workforce Housing Pilot for two one seven oh four and two one seven oh eight Kelly Road Project and schedule a second hearing for the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four regular city council.
All right, is there support?
I will second that. I had one quick question. Are those the, I was trying to look this up in BSNA. Those are the accurate addresses for the project? I just want to make sure because I think I looked it up in BSNA and the one, one address was two one seven one eight?
That's correct.
So it goes from two one seven oh four to two one seven one eight?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Two one seven?
Yeah.
Four eight?
Uh, one eight.
One eight.
So.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I would change my motion to read twenty-one seven oh four to twenty-one seven one eight.
I will still second that. Yep, thank you, Councilman Curley.
Just, just a comment. For those of you who've lived in East Point as long as I have, pass those vacant lots every day, every day, and so all of you. And the first thing that comes to my mind, God, what are they going to do with that? What are they going to build on that? And that's, I, I know already it's going to be beautiful, beautiful spot. So congratulations and God bless.
Thank you. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item E, approval of the twenty twenty-four snow and ice removal services contracts. contracts. And did anyone want to open up or make a motion? And Mariah, can you, or Ms. Walton, can you explain this is, you're recommending to extend the, or award it for two different properties, right?
Yes, to two different vendors. Do you want me to go?
I'm just reading over the motions.
I think was the intention with the motions, the, let's see, if we just look at the second page in the packet with the table, we'd be awarding the first two lines to RNA Facilities Management and then the next five to Ed's Two Men and a Mower.
Yes.
Was the intention.
Thank you.
While Mr. Mayor, I can make that motion.
Sure. Are you, two separate motions?
Um.
Or one, doesn't matter to me.
Sure. I think we can do two separate ones, that's fine. I'll, I'll motion that we award the snow and ice bid proposal for city buildings and parks to RNA Facilities Management. Let's see, let me get with the expiration date of April 15, 2027 and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
I'll second.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions on that one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
One of the things that we wanted to do is that there are code enforcement properties, and we wanted to have the ability to award the code enforcement snow and ice removal, which would be dependent on Building Department posting a notice and then 24 hours later notifying a contractor to come and remove the snow and/or ice. And we wanted to award that to both, to each of the companies, so that dependent on, as someone said, if we had a 12-inch snowfall, we would have the capacity to make sure that everything was timely taken care of. So the first motion would be city buildings and parks and the code enforcement to RNA Facilities. And then the second motion would be miscellaneous city owned and right-of-way and code enforcement to Ed's Two Men and a Mower.
Okay. I think that was where the confusion was coming from, was the overlapping award of Building Department code enforcement. Does council, or did you have anything you wanted to add?
I guess I could just make a second motion, if that's the easiest way to just add. Right? So, second motion would just be to award, well, I guess, let's just make that one motion for the Building Department code enforcement. We'll motion to award the Building Department code enforcement, snow and ice bid proposal to both RNA Facilities Management and Ed's Two Men and a Mower.
Okay.
To.
So we'll do the first motion first and then?
Oh, we didn't vote on that one yet.
Yeah. So please call the roll.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Thank you. Getting out of things here. All right. I'll just, just so we're all clear here, I'll just read it again. We'll motion to award the Building Department code enforcement snow and ice bid proposal to RNA Facilities Management and Ed's Two Men and a Mower, both of them. Expiration date of April 15, 2027 unless terminated and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
Should I just go with the third one here?
Thank you.
All right. Well, motion, I'll motion to award the miscellaneous, no, no, hold on, the miscellaneous city-owned properties, the miscellaneous right-of-way properties, the miscellaneous properties, and the Downtown Development Authority snow bid proposals to Ed's Two Men and a Mower with an expiration date of April 15, 2027 unless terminated and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions on that one? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I know we've broken in three motions, but we got there. Moving on to item F, approval of the hourly rate increase for labor council. Would anyone like to make a motion or just open up with comments?
I would move that we approve the increase to the hourly rate of labor council by Schiffman Fournier to 165 an hour effective October 15, 2024.
Support. Hey, did anyone have any questions on this one? All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
I was going to say, Rich, close your ears before we call the roll on that one. Item G, discussion on remaining inventory of tax-reverted properties. Would anyone like to open up on this one?
Sure, I guess I could, Mr. Mayor. I think we should try to get to, well, we, there's been a whole load of history with this over the years, right? I guess when first I was on council, we'd just purchase all the tax foreclosures, sell them off to the highest bidder, basically. A few times, we got lucky and we accompanied, do a good job fixing up the houses, flip them, and at least we wouldn't, you know, hear about them again. They wouldn't go back into foreclosure, but sometimes that did happen. So then we just see the same properties maybe three years later or something like that. So we tried working with Habitat for Humanity and Community Housing Network and worked on a lot of the properties that that worked. And then also recently, and obviously with COVID, gotten a little wonky with what we've been trying to do. We tried to hire a vendor to flip some of the houses so that we could just sell them on market, then we know that they are being improved and know that someone's moving in. It's also not a company buying them all and then just renting them all out, which could have been a possibility too before with the selling them all to one vendor. So I guess I would just, in general, hope that we, you know, if we have, and I forget off the top of my head again, so we have five residential structures, nine vacant lots, one commercial. With the vacant lots, I hope, as we discussed before, we could maybe do new builds with some money from the county, if that's possible. I ideally like to see that happen. And then five residential structures, maybe we can try again, go out to bid or something, find somebody that will flip them, fix them, and we could sell them on the market, or potentially work with a nonprofit third party on those properties. Would, in summary, I guess, be my comments.
Ms. Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you for your comments on that, particularly when you said maybe we can build ourselves. I think, I think we have an opportunity here that maybe we never took advantage of, and that's building the houses ourselves. Well, get them built. I don't, I can't hammer nails straight, not me. I'm not talking about me. But I'm talking, the opportunity is here at the table. Now, we're not going to be able to discuss this whole thing tonight, but if we give some direction to the administration, if we find out we have a majority of the council, it's kind of liking that idea. The houses are already there. There's what, five residential properties? I don't even want to ask how long one of the five has been there. Maybe Kim could tell me, but I don't know if I want to know or not. Don't tell me. But we've had, we've had some of them for a long time, a long time. So I just think we need to be aggressive, move forward on it. As I said, the opportunity has been laid in our lap to really get something done, and particularly having houses built on the vacant lots.
So I agree with that. There's, I mean, there's a lot going on with this issue. I think at some point we have to revisit what is officially our policy currently, because I know that we're not really following it, and I think it probably needs some tweaks anyway. In regards to the vacant properties, I would like to see administration look into what would it cost to award a contractor to build on all of those vacant residential properties.
Amen.
I know that this is going to be an issue for Randy to look at, too. I know that we would kind of lose money on the front end, but I think we would make it up in a manner of years because it would be taxed when someone's built and sold. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Randy, at this point?
Without looking into what it's costing to build homes, I couldn't even give you a guess. Home prices have been fairly high still here in the city. I've heard some ridiculous numbers, like $300 a square foot to build, but I honestly don't know what it really is costing these days. But, you know, again, if we put it out for bid and they're going to build five homes or 10 homes or something, I would assume it would be less than if you're doing a single home build.
Yes. And I think the question really is just, would it financially be feasible? I mean, I think that's something we would end up dipping into the general fund.
We'd have to look at, yeah, how long of a payback, depending on how much it costs to build versus sell.
I do think we should aggressively look into that. The thing with these vacant lots is we just end up getting them back over and over again, especially because the neighbors don't want to buy them because why do that when they don't have to pay the taxes and they're still there? So in regards to the existing houses, have we had those inspected recently? Does anyone know?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, our new building official actually is a builder by certification by trade, and he has gone into each of those, those that are partially renovated and those that have had nothing done to them. And he can provide, his suggestion actually was to provide very specific specifications that would meet all health, safety issues, and he can very clearly detail all that out for each of them. But he has, he has been in those, all of them.
Okay. I mean, I think that's the next step for those properties, is find out what condition they're in and then, I'd like to ultimately end up selling the properties and maybe having a requirement that they be sold to like a homeowner that lives there for three years or something like that, is what I'd like to see.
You're right. The choice we got right now is to do nothing, and as Randy said last meeting, to pay the county the property tax, right? Or do something creative, out of the box, shoot shotgun, because I love this conversation. I'm going to go home and have myself a Diet Pips, I feel so good. But if we could, I don't know if you need a motion to, you know, instruct, you know what we're talking about? You know what to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, the building official, John Myers, has had experience in putting together very strict purchase agreements that include timelines, not only for what has to be done, but the timeframe, so it's done quickly. He has actually then had several, a number of properties, both residential and commercial revert back to the city's control because they were not meeting either the specifications or the timeframe. So again, it's something that could put in, be put into place to ensure that things are being done exactly as council chooses.
I guess one more quick comment. I would say I think most, like what everyone's saying here, is consistent with the tax foreclosure policy that we did adopt previously, like under residential vacant lots, as the city's preference is new home construction. And then with structure, we, I think, said, yes, should classify, I think we say, yeah, properties identified as a significant improvement shall be renovated, brought up to current codes, things like that. So I think we are, maybe there's some things we can adjust from when we first did this, but I think at heart, it's probably currently what we've got would make sense to go forward without really changing anything and be consistent.
Mayor, if I could ask Kim a question?
Sure.
Kim, she's shaking her head, no. One of the vacant lots, I'm not sure who I had a conversation with, was so small or something that we couldn't build anything on it, but we've had it for a long time. Is that true?
We have a couple of lots that, again, separate from the buildable lots and the structures that we have issues with, that they are behind fences. There were some tax foreclosure issues, maybe title issues, that we're not sure where those actually land. There is one very small lot, I think that was, that was foreclosing right now, Randy.
No, it's actually the Moak property?
No, I think he's talking about the lift station on Stevens.
Oh, well, that one's.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
We do own a, it's a pie-shaped lot on Moak that is unbuildable. We've tried to sell it to the neighbors multiple times, and they're just, nobody's been interested.
Okay, let's, let's think outside the box. What could we do with that? We can't build a house. Can we put park benches on there and maybe a couple of trees and, I don't know. It's better than just leveling the dang thing, just sit there. Let's be creative. Let's, I'll go there and eat my sandwich if you put benches there. Okay, then what are we going to?
So I think administration kind of has direction, we just want to look into actually a feasible plan to build on those lots.
Okay, great.
And repair and sell, you know, the other five properties.
Sounds great.
All right. Any other questions?
Sorry, I do have a question. On the residential structures, when it comes to repair, so I have the note about having the inspection report from John, from our building official. What is the council looking for specifically when it comes to repairs?
I actually think we would need to see the results to know what condition they're in, to have an idea of what, I mean, ideally, I'd like them really repaired to look nice before they're sold. And I guess I want to know if that's feasible.
Okay. So doing a report and then just making a recommendation and providing that all to council is sufficient, and then you guys will make a decision on how to move forward at that point?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
I just want a clarification on that.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item H, approve removal of member from the Parks Commission. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make the motion without mentioning a person's name. I don't think we should do that, but I'll move that, remove the member that the Parks Commission is recommending.
Second that.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Moving on to item I, approve appointment of member to the Planning Commission.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I would move that we appoint Gary Seisic to the Planning Commission with the term to expire December 31, 2029.
Support.
All right. Any comments? I know he's, I think he's here, right?
Yep.
Yep. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Ah. Ah, yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Moving on to payroll and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move that we pay the bills in the amount of $6,942,643.80.
Second that.
All right. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshadlik?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the second hearing of the public, the second hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard? Would anyone wish to be heard?
Thank you, on a different topic this time, sort of. I mentioned to you last time, again, I'm Sylvia Ordino. I am a Detroit resident, but I mentioned that I'm also a member of the state's Safe Drinking Water Advisory Council. And in particular, we're looking at the lead and copper rule and where implementation has been happening and how it is that there's supposed to be these local councils and, as you, I believe, are aware, in January, it's going to be additional changes to reduce the parts per billion. So one of the things that we did here also with the surveys are concerns with residents about the cost of lead service and replacement, water quality issues. And so I would just like to request that you all consider making a presentation to the council. It's coordinated with DHHS and Eagle. And the reason so is because there are several cities across the state that are presenting the models for how that is that they're communicating with residents and what it is that they believe is still needed in order to improve communication, education. And I think that there is probably a lot that you all could share, so I just wanted to maybe make that as an invitation. And I'd be happy to follow up with Eagle staff to see if that's something that you might also consider as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Hall, Rayford, East Point, again, this issue is so important to me, it really is. And I'll give you an example of why. Last night during the hearing of the public, one of the residents told the board, but because everything happened, we were basically ineffective and we should not be holding the seats that we do. We were also told by another resident that there was a conflict of interest in how an investigation took place. I didn't run for reelection because I can't abide foolishness and people who don't care about the position they hold when they've been elected. I take everything I do seriously. And so I want to make sure that the voters understand. This is about this city, our viability, and we need to have a viable school district. And if things keep going the way they do, we won't have it. And our kids deserve so much more. I listened to the accomplishments of a young woman at the Excellence Dinner from Roseville because of access to curriculum. We don't have that anymore. There are a number of reasons why. But part of the reason is we have to have good leadership. And when we don't have that, everything else starts crumbling and falling apart. So I'm going to do everything I can to convince every voter to pay attention to the names on the ballot and weigh what they have done. Some have been there from six to 20 years and the district is steadily declining. We need to pay attention and voters need to consider how they're voting. Thank you for obliging me to use this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kleinfeld, council members, Gary Sasic, East Point resident. And I'm really here to plead to other residents, these boards and commissions need our help. It's not asking too much of anybody to give basically one day a month to sit on a border commission to help offer input to our city council. So again, I'm just asking you, please get involved. Our city needs us and thank you for your support tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Edwards, East Point residence. I just have a, more or less a concern for clarity in regard to the agenda on the new business, item C, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 24-1242, add chapter six, article five, special event. My concern is, is it proper protocol for one person making any changes or doing anything for just one person or should it be done, or is it supposed to be done as a committee or as a group thing for and done in a manner to where it's not after the fact? Then the clarity has to come. If someone could explain that to me, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I think you guys are off for about four weeks till your next meeting. Reason why I'm talking tonight is because I feel that the Nine Mile Road issue is going to be coming up pretty soon and since your next meeting is a month away, just wanted to share with you, last week I was visiting a friend in St. Clair Shores. His mother was recovering from a surgery and while I was there visiting, she had a minor medical emergency. We had to call 911, St. Clair Shores Fire Department, the big fire truck, and also paramedics came to the house. Fortunately, it was resolved without any issues, but we did have a chance to talk. They hung around for a little while to make sure that she was all right. And I asked them just out of curiosity what they thought about the Nine Mile Road project. First firefighter said, what are you talking about? They voted that down. And I said, oh no, it's come back around again. I said, this time it's from Schroder or Tuscany, depending on, I don't know, you've said both things, to I-94, they want to reduce it to three lanes. They said, oh, that's a really bad idea. And I said, wait, it gets better. They want to put a median on Nine Mile Road between Kelly and I-94. And they said, well, that's really, doesn't make sense, you know, we use the left turn lane as an emergency route, you know, emergency vehicles often use that center lane when there's a lot of traffic. And I said, yep, and they're going to put a roundabout at Nine Mile and Kelly. And they said, that doesn't sound very good either. One of the firefighters said, you know, I actually do like roundabouts, but that's not necessary at that intersection. In fact, that's not a good idea for that particular intersection. And I asked them, you know, how often do you come into East Point to assist when there's an emergency? You know, I don't know, I assume that East Point helps out St. Clair Shores, St. Clair Shores helps out East Point. And they said that they do come fairly frequently and this would be impeding their assistance when they have to come down Nine Mile Road to help us out if there's a fire or medical emergency in East Point. So I know that, you know, you've really not put a lot of stock in what residents and businesses have had to say on it. I really wish that you would listen to public safety.
You have about 30 seconds.
You know, back in August 17th of 2021, we had Public Safety Director Roheb and the Fire Chief Sage at that time say that it was a bad idea. February 6th, 2024, Chief Haynes and Fire Chief Mark Quart, I hope I'm pronouncing his name right, said that it's a bad idea. And you have four weeks before your next meeting and I hope you use that time to really rethink what you are planning on doing with Nine Mile Road. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Actually, I have nothing. We very efficiently run, I know we have a closed session on the agenda. Everyone, thanks for coming out and sharing your concerns and your thoughts. Pastor Rush, I will reach out to you and talk with you personally. That's it, thank you.
All right, Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Mayor. The church that I go to in Royal Oak is 180 years old, First Baptist Church of Royal Oak. We are having, I know we don't have another regular meeting until what, the 12th? And I'd, maybe I'd ask the city attorney this question first. If we brought a resolution to this table when we have the workshop for the marijuana, would that be legal? Could we do that?
I don't see why not. It's an open meeting and as long as it's done beforehand, I don't see why not.
I think if we wait till the 12th, that's a long time, but doing it that night, was that the 29th, the 29th of this month, I would leave it up to the administration to get the right wording. And let's do that because when you have a church that's 175 years old, that's a long time. And, you know, our church is 180. I haven't been there that long, but been there a long time. Long time, long time. In fact, I'm the oldest person in the church. If you count them all, they stand up, there's no one, maybe 15 years younger than I am. So anyway, I'm digressing, Mayor, so close me off, Mayor, tell me to stop.
All right, council.
So administration, we will have a resolution of gratulations for the manual.
Good.
That's it.
All right, Councilman Pashadlik.
I'd just like to welcome Gary to the planning commission. I'd like to welcome Gary to the planning commission. I know he's very active in our community and thank you for your statement about getting involved. It's very important that people do consider those commissions. It's a vital part of our community. Secondly, I'd like to just piggyback on Wanda Moody headset about the ACDC and the arts show. She failed to mention that Saturday's hours are 12 to 5:00. So if you can't make Friday evening 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we are having the show Saturday from noon to 5:00. And that's at Spindler Park, the building at Spindler Park.
All right, Councilman DeMonico?
Thank you. Yeah, Pastor Rush, sorry, when you mentioned the email, I was like, I don't recall this. And I looked at my email, it is certainly there. I apologize for not seeing that. There is information in here for a proclamation, so I forwarded it on to our city manager. I think what Councilman Curly said is a great idea. I didn't not respond to you on purpose for sure and then I see your follow-up today. So I apologize again. And then for Mr. Edwards, for the ordinances, we had the first reading last meeting, discussed it and kind of gave some direction to our city attorney and he made some changes between the two meetings. It's put on the agenda. Then we all see it on the agenda, which the public also sees. And then any changes at that point need to be made in front of us. I just talked to him ahead of time to save time at the table with the intention, of course, of it needs to be brought forward at the meeting. So like Councilman Baker asked, we went through each of the two items so that everybody heard them. But that's basically how it goes. It's sometimes like, what, making sausage or hot dogs, you know, making laws. It's not, you know, the most straightforward process sometimes, but that's why it went like that. And then, yeah, thank you to everyone that came out about the water affordability bills. I certainly support those and so Sylvia Alton Roslin, Diane, I think, you're somewhere out there. Thanks for coming out and talking about that. And good luck, Gary, on the planning commission and Community Housing Network, good luck on your project also. And yeah, everyone just make sure to vote. Of course, yeah, we're not going to have a meeting, well, a regular meeting between now and Election Day. So make sure you vote. You can vote, of course, absentee now. You'll be able to vote early if you'd like, you know, before the election, starting the Saturday, not the Saturday, right before the election, the one before that. You can come in and actually put your ballot in the tabulator like you would on Election Day as opposed to like how you do absentee and you leave it at City Hall here. So you can put it right into the tabulator if you want to do that instead of coming on the Tuesday or of course, like always, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. Please just make sure you vote, research your candidates. There are certainly a lot of things on the ballot. So please, you know, go to mi.gov/vote and you can just look up your ballot. Please do that beforehand because there will be names you don't recognize, I'm sure, if you don't otherwise. And I think, yeah, that's all. Mr. Mayor, thanks.
All right, thank you everyone for coming out. I'm glad that we're going to put the resolution on the next agenda, our next agenda. Pastor Rush, I see your email from today. It was the first time I had heard of it, so I don't think I got the, I don't know why. But I apologize, it would have been nice to have on tonight's agenda, but I think we can still get it done before you have your celebration. So that is all I have. So entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move concerning pending litigation pursuant to MCL 15268.
It's okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
All right, going into closed session at 8:22. All right, going into closed session at 8:22.